Well, thank you very much, Excellency Ambassador Wu. Thank you very much, Dr. Kottam. Thank you very much for the very interesting final session of today's conference. Well, excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, we have now come to the concluding session of this year's conference. Now, instead of the regular way to do the concluding session, this year we decided to do it differently. As you may have noticed during the course of the last two days, you may have seen some young students, volunteers, young talents sitting around the room, volunteering, assisting you with this and that. They are, many of them are among the Young Leaders Program, a new addition to this year's conference. They are a selected group of young talent from the Diplomatic Academy of Vietnam who have been joined by some thirty or so other young leaders from around the world onto our Young Leaders Programs of this year. They are having their own discussion alongside our own. And I was told that their discussion is also very open, is also very transparent, and are equally, if not more interesting than our own. So, we are going to listen to their perspective in this year's concluding session before we make our concluding remarks. So, let's hear their voices and what they have to offer from the perspective of the leaders of tomorrow. I would like to invite the moderator of the Young Leaders Session, Mr. La Eng Tu, a researcher of the Institute for Strategic Studies, and the young leaders of the DAV, as well as the young leaders who are going to join us internationally. Please, you have the floor.
Thank you, Dr. Sun. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, distinguished participants. I hope you are still awake after two full days of intensive discussion. My name is Tulai, and I'm a researcher at the Diplomatic Academy of Vietnam. Welcome to the special session for the young leaders. So, this is the first time in the series of the International Conference on South China Sea hosted by DAV that we have an exclusive session for the young leaders. So, on behalf of the panelists, I would like to thank and express our sincere gratitude to the organizers for having us here and online to discuss one of the most crucial issues to peace and security in the region, as well as to establish a network of young scholars to build mutual interest in the subject matter. Somehow skipping those, in this session, we have six panelists and more than thirty other young leaders joining us virtually from all around the world. And since we don't have the Q and A and due to the time limitations, our panelists are kindly requested to spend more than five minutes to share with us your thoughts and suggestions and brief the conference of the Young Leaders Discussion if time allows. Without further ado, I would like to introduce our first speaker, Mr. Daishuke Kawae. Mr. Kawae is a research fellow at the Japan Institute of International Affairs. He is also affiliated with the Global Institute for Emerging Security Technology and the Castle of Security Corporation in the Asia-Pacific CSK Japan. His primary focus is security issue in the Pacific. So, the floor is yours, Daishuke.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity and all support by Diplomatic Academy of Vietnam. So, let me share my screen and my PowerPoint. So, now that the Indo-Pacific tide has risen, our diversity is reshaping the international order as a governance imperative. As such, what are needed are norms that are actively built by local agents having strong notions about desirable behavior on the key issues of the convergence which will foster resilience against economic, environmental, and political shocks. To this end, there are great opportunities to enhance territorial integrity and the betterment via the application of space-based technologies, not only as military game changers, but also as diplomatic and development tools. Ensuring our neighbors have alternative investment streams is one of the keys elevating our region because by having peripheral powers that can draw upon extra systematic resources increases socialization of norms. Looking at ASEAN's core areas of cooperation, we see maritime connectivity and economic. The Japan's three pillars of FOIP are also in line with these. Firstly, is a rule of law, freedom of navigation, free trade, and so on. Secondly, is economic prosperity with over 200 billion dollars invested in ASEAN, JICA being involved in numerous projects, and Japan part of the Blue Dot Network. Thirdly, is Japan's commitment to peace and stability. FOIP's goals are to build capacity in maritime law enforcement, safety, and security. To fully realize these initiatives, one essential element is cooperative connectivity. Japan is at the forefront of the space data paradigm which allows like-minded nations to understand and address fundamental issues relating to development and security. Japan's regional leadership is exemplified by Sentinel Asia Initiative, which combines positioning observation and the communications satellite data on a voluntary basis in support of disaster mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery. Further to this, Japan has also committed to developing a space data sharing framework with ASEAN nations to continue building norms diffusion. This investigation requires seamless interaction between all actors as well as ensuring safe access and providing cost-effective lift capacity. This is what JAXA along with partners are working on. But how this relates to this ocean? Since Japan is hugely dependent on seaborne trade, the free and open Indo-Pacific vision has maritime security at its core. Therefore, developing maritime domain awareness capacity is fundamental to all our efforts. However, as it is impossible for any single country to collect sufficient information in a comprehensive manner, an international information sharing network is essential. The Japan Coast Guard recently introduced its satellite-based maritime surveillance operations. MSILs covers a wide range of information including real-time or near-real-time information, such as sea conditions, weather forecasting, and navigational warnings. This system has been developed as a tool for maritime security and safety to deliver instant access to geospatial information provided by government agencies and the relevant organization under the overall interministerial coordination by the National Ocean Policy Secretariat. However, satellites are vulnerable systems. Therefore, to provide a comprehensive security, Japan inaugurated its own space force. According to my research, what is occurring in space security is various space weapons already demonstrated.
You have thirty seconds left.
We need to dissuade our adversary from thinking our space assets make tempting targets. Thus, the initial goals of the SLOS is monitor such things as space debris or suspicious satellites, as well as developing data chain capabilities. These systems are designed to be interoperable but also retain degrees of autonomy where necessary because this approach improves durability and flexibility. The SLOS is also looking into developing a counter-space component utilizing the electromagnetic spectrum. But how to progress remains a major challenge for many nations. Nevertheless, the space cyber is a critical realm which requires swift action because cyber attacks are the predominant method of hostile actions in space. By taking a holistic approach to regional security, Japan's cooperative vision strengthens our collective capacity to withstand the shocks we will not face. The backbone of our independent and shared infrastructure is space data. And by pooling our resources, we can maintain territorial integrity and national sovereignty, the freedom of passage in all domains. As a rule of law, as an overarching authority. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you, Daishuke. Since we run out a little bit over time, I would like to introduce to our second speaker, Ms. Lee Yinghui. Ms. Lee is an associate research fellow with the Maritime Security Program, the Radnang School of International Studies and Nanyang Technological University, Singapore. Her main research interests include maritime security and cooperation in the Indo-Pacific maritime trade and blue economy in the South China Sea. So, you have the floor, Yinghui.
Okay, thank you, Chair. And first of all, I'd like to thank the Diplomatic Academy of Vietnam for giving me this opportunity to speak at this Young Leaders Session. And so, as I synthesized the various discussions throughout the various panels in the two-day conference, as well as the great interaction and exchange of ideas in the special session we had earlier this morning, I would like to just point out three points, my thoughts and observations for the South China Sea going forward. So, first, disputing the South China Sea has put a new space maritime order under threat in the region. The situation is made worse by rising great power competition, especially between the United States and China. And importantly, various unilateral actions, militarization, and selective interpretation of international law has had a detrimental effect in terms of fueling distrust within the region. So, with this in mind, I think the logical question we need to ask is how can we encourage all countries within and beyond the region to abide by the international rules and norms in order to make the South China Sea a more stable and secure place? So, in particular, I think the Code of Conduct was brought up a lot throughout these two days. I think we need to ask, is the Code of Conduct sufficient to influence and constrain Chinese behavior? And if not, what is the utility of the Code of Conduct then? Does it still retain its normative role in getting China to the negotiating table? So, I think these are questions we need to ask going forward. And second, I think there's a general consensus with regards to the need for more functional and practical cooperation within the South China Sea, starting with the so-called low-hanging fruits that we often mention within ASEAN in areas such as fisheries and marine environmental protection that we have heard a lot within these two days. However, I think we also need to recognize that such functional cooperation are ongoing in various ASEAN lab mechanisms. And perhaps therefore, we need to ask the question, why is it that these initiatives has not been so "unsuccessful" in a way? So, perhaps I think we need to look at the South China Sea issue in terms of two distinct tiers, the functional level and the political level. So, from how I see it, while practical cooperation, both multilateral and bilateral, has been rather robust at the functional level, the confidence and trust that such activities are supposed to help build has not translated into greater trust at the larger political level. So, I think we need to ask the question then, how can we work towards de-politicizing such issues in these areas? I think this was brought up in the last session as well. So, I think this is perhaps an area that warrants greater discussion going forward. And last but not least, the role of ASEAN. I think this was another issue that was brought up a lot throughout these two days, ASEAN centrality, the role of ASEAN in dealing with the South China Sea conflict. So, while ASEAN continues to emphasize its centrality, I think it's also high time that ASEAN comes to terms with its own internal diversity. It might not be a bad thing, but how can ASEAN better deal with China given its own divergent maritime priorities among its ten ASEAN members? Are the current ASEAN mechanisms adequate to deal with China in a way? And what are the pros and cons of other possible modalities of cooperation, such as the ASEAN-x approach that I think some of our speakers have brought up within the last two days? And lastly, how this involvement of external powers through initiatives such as the Quad, the Quad Plus, and also the wider Indo-Pacific concept, does this change the dynamics of the South China Sea? So, I think these are just some questions that I thought of that would be a good summary of how we can see the issue going forward. And thank you so much.
Thank you, Yinghui, for keeping time and your very thought-provoking comments, such as how to enhance ASEAN centrality and to promote functional cooperation with regard to the South China Sea issue. Next, we move to our third speaker today, Mr. Nguyen Hison, who is with us today at the conference room. Mr. Nguyen Hison is a senior of the Faculty of International Communication and Culture at the Diplomatic Academy of Vietnam. His main research interests focus on Chinese studies and journalism and cultural diplomacy. So, Sun, you have the floor.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, good afternoon, our young speaker and online and on-site participant. So, first, I want to say thank to the organizing committee for inviting me to this session. So, over the past day, we have heard very deep analysis and the thought-provoking presentation in the areas of security issue, the environment, and fishery, legal aspect. And now, I will share my personal perspective on another aspect of the South China Sea dispute, the aspect I think hasn't been digged deeply into but deserve our attention. It is China's soft power in the South China Sea dispute. So, regarding the concept of soft power, it is the ability to persuade others to do what you want without using force or coercion. A country's soft power often come from three resources: its cultural, political values, and its foreign policy. For many countries, the central resource of soft power is culture. And a wise utilization of soft power is the combination of culture and the flow of information. And I will examine China's soft power in this perspective. So, first, China is increasingly using cultural products to spread and shape the China version of sovereignty. So, over the past time, has we need an increase in the number of cultural products that contain China hidden propaganda of sovereignty in the South China Sea? Books and the movie that contains the propaganda are published everywhere and also provoke a lot of controversy. As a saying goes, Rome wasn't built in a day. These cultural products lift a tree level of invasion on the perception and the behavior of the receivers. It is awareness and sympathy and acceptance. Due to the time limit, I do not go into detail, but I want to say that these cultural products can impact a lot on the perception and attitudes of the audience in the long term, especially the young. So, the phone's information can be corrected, but once the perception is oriented falsely, it is very difficult to get it back on the right track. So, second, China is using the cultural influencer to provoke the nationalism inside and also impact the young people outside. So, as a part of China's master plan, it is taking advantage of its celebrity global network and their huge number of fans, especially in the Southeast Asian countries, to propagandize that South China Sea belongs to China. A large number of Chinese celebrities, according to my calculation, about 222 people posted the picture and comments on the web or Instagram supporting China claim, even some artists very aggressive. So, this strategy, on the one hand, sparked the nationalism among the Chinese young citizens, strengthened their belief and their determination to protect their sovereignty. On the other hand, it pushed the young people, especially their fans, in the Southeast Asian country, especially the claimants in a dilemma, boycotting, staying silently supportive, or defending and attacking. So, I want to, so, this does create a large division among the young fans in Vietnam and also in the Philippines. And I think that if the young people, they do not have a firm political stand and a strong sense of patriotism, then national sovereignty may encounter the erosion right from its citizens. So, the third one is China is increasingly use the flow of information to influence the domestic and the international perspective. So, based on my research, there are three common characteristics of Chinese media, especially Chinese state media whenever the South China Sea conflict breaks out. First, it is increase in the frequencies of news. The second, the news reflects China's tough view on their interests and sovereignty. And the third one is the news is very often very accusative and critical other countries' so-called illegal activities or the violating Chinese sovereignty. So, this has had a negative impact on the public opinion inside and outside. So, now, the ASEAN claimant, they have to cop with not only Chinese military expansion and the legal misinterpretation in the South China Sea, but also they have to cop with the soft weapon that China is using. So, how should ASEAN claimant respond to it? I think the very first step, it is very crucial to understand China's soft power strategy. Then, make more accurate assessment on the influence of these cultural products on the perception and the behavior of its citizens, especially the young generation. And then, the policymakers need to be more sensitive and attentive to the increasing expansion of China using soft power as a tool of settling down the dispute. Then, they should be prepared for the corresponding response. So, that is the end of my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Sun, for bringing into our attention a very important aspect of the South China Sea issue, which is cultural and information, I call it the information warfare. And if you have further research, please stay with us. So, our next speaker, I would like to introduce Ms. Di Ta Li Lian Sa. She is a research associate at the Center for International Law at the National University of Singapore. Her current research focuses on the protection of the marine environment in Southeast Asian seas. So, Di Ta, can you say with us your take on that?
Sure. Thank you very much, Chair. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you to the DAV for the kind invitation. I'm very sorry I can't be in Hanoi, but I would like to congratulate the Vietnamese government to effectively control the COVID-19 pandemic. And hopefully, next year, we can all be in Hanoi for the same conference. So, as one of the selected young leaders, I'm very grateful and happy to share my perspectives on the South China Sea. Yesterday, we heard various interesting insights. And then, today, we heard more and more thought-provoking insights from honorable panelists. And also this morning, we also had several young leaders gathered and discussed the same topic. My personal views on this are just ASEAN should play a central role in managing and promoting cooperation among the littoral states without prejudice to the ongoing maritime and sovereignty disputes in the South China Sea. So, littoral states may start from practical sectoral cooperation. For example, protection of the marine environment and fisheries can be examples of where small steps could be taken through ASEAN to enhance trust and confidence among the littoral states. So, fisheries is more feasible and less sensitive than joint petroleum development as fishing activities are already ongoing despite the ongoing dispute. Therefore, the objective is not introducing new activities, but to better regulate existing activities. And moreover, we know that there are common interests among the littoral states of the South China Sea to ensure sustainability of the fisheries and also the marine environment in the disputed areas. So, otherwise, we will be more plastic than fish in the future. And the disputed areas also represent an inseparable part of the ecosystem of the South China Sea. Thus, close coordination among the South China Sea states are necessary. Even if there's no dispute duty to cooperate exists, especially with regards to transboundary fish stocks. So, let's aim for the low-hanging fruit where the focus is on building trust and confidence among the littoral states. It may start from an informal ad hoc activity to understand the status of fish stocks in the South China Sea. So, before we worry about boundaries and quotas, let's start with scientists doing stock assessment. So, it's science-based and less political in nature. Does all littoral state will have a common understanding on environmental status of the South China Sea as a basis of harmonizing conservation measures? So, other forms of cooperation, of course, can be utilized, such as by sharing the status of fishing fleets in each state, exchange of fisheries regulations, perhaps establishment of no-fishing zones, which could be seasonal, and prohibition of certain fishing practices. And there can also be other mechanisms for fighting conflicts at sea, maybe by having an agreement on unplanned encounters at sea or having an SOP on fisheries enforcement. Although the COC is still being negotiated, but there are frameworks for ASEAN and China to cooperate on sectoral issues. As we know, there is the 2003 Joint Declaration on Strategic Partnership for Peace and Prosperity between ASEAN and China. And they had agreed to further activate exchanges in several areas, including the less sensitive issues, such as environment. And the ASEAN and China Plan of Action to implement ASEAN-China strategic partnership also promotes protection of the marine environment, maritime security, and responsible fisheries. And we also have a 2017 Declaration for a decade of coastal and marine environmental protection in the South China Sea, which ASEAN and China emphasize the need to promote protection of the marine environment and sustainable fisheries as well. So, whether the COC will be finalized in the near future or not, South China Sea is a smi enclosed sea where the littoral states have the international law obligations to cooperate under Article 123 of ANCLAS. And they also have the duty of mutual restraint under Article 74, Paragraph 3 of ANCLAS. And we shouldn't belittle any effort to pursue any cooperation in South China Sea. It may be small, but it will contribute to enhance the level of trust before the littoral states can cooperate or work on bigger or more contentious issue. And to pursue practical cooperation through ASEAN, we need to understand how ASEAN function, its three-pillar structure, and its hierarchical policy and lawmaking process in order for the cooperation to be meaningful. So, it's important to involve the right focal points, which means if states are going to pursue practical cooperation through ASEAN, it has to go beyond the political and security community. And relevant ASEAN sexual bodies and government agencies must be involved to ensure that the cooperation is not just pretty words, but concrete and substantive actions. So, I'll end here, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Di Ta, for keeping time. Next, I would like to turn over to our next speaker, Mr. Aristio Damawan. He is a legal academic and lecturer in international law universities in Indonesia. He is also a researcher at the Center for Sustainable Ocean Policy, where he provides consultancy for various Indonesian government agencies and NGOs. Aristio, can you get us into some legal aspect of the South China Sea issue?
Sure. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Moritor. Thank you very much for the Vietnamese Diplomatic Academy for organizing this very important and timely event on the South China Sea. So, I think I just want to sum up our whole discussions during this two-day conference by making a few remarks. The first one is like, what are the existing challenges that we are currently facing in the South China Sea? And also, how we are looking forward, how to maintain peace and full and security in the disputed area? So, the first one relating is to the existing challenges. I think a lot of us during the conference have discussed that the first, the pandemic, the COVID-19 pandemic is actually become one of the major challenges for all claimants in the South China Sea dispute, where all the economic impact have impacted that many countries cut the difference budget allocation, which mean make weaker and weaker patrol at sea. And however, on the other hand, I think there's a lot of cases where the Chinese authorities put more assertive actions in the littoral sea which involve West Kafalas Sea and some other Vietnamese fishing vessels. So, I think the pandemic is obviously our very biggest challenges. And the second one is also the US-China rivalry in the regions, where the US foreign policy is which shift towards more on Asia. And it might stay for less five to ten years. I think the US is increasing more presence in the disputed area. And as well, there's a lot of discourse during our discussions on whether or not President Joe Biden will still put their foreign policy more on Asia and South China Sea, which I think I share the common ideas that I think most likely in the next four years, US will still put more presence in the disputed area. So, I think the most important thing is how can ASEAN claimant or parties in the disputed area area capitalize the presence of the US in the area. So, I think... And then, the third existing challenges, I think we discussed in the panels, whether or not the war or submissions of note verbal to the UN regarding to the extended Malaysian Extended Continental Shelf is important or have a legal relevance or not in international law. So, I think even though the note verbal might not have a direct legal implications, I think the note verbal is very important in many sense. One of it is to show the current world or many countries’ positions in objecting the nine-day strike in the South China Sea. So, I think the note verbal is playing a very much important role. And my next point is like how we are looking forward to maintain peace and security in the disputed area. So, I think during our young leader sessions, we shared a lot of pessimistic on whether or not the ASEAN can be able to conclude the Code of Conduct next year. But I think the Code of Conduct is a very much, very important part to maintain peace and security in the regions. Therefore, I think there are a lot of things that obviously that should be governed in the COC, but I think there are three main points. The first one, I think the COC should put protection of fishermen in the priority. As we might know, that the South China Sea is very much have a significant number of fishermen, 12% of the world fishers product was from the South China Sea, and also 50% of the world fishery is passing through the South China Sea. So, I think protection of fishermen is very much should be in the heart of the COC. And the second one is, as the sessions earlier today discuss about the prevention of escalation and tensions when law enforcement agencies met at sea, so I think there should be regulated in this specific area. So, I think the COC negotiation might look at the Qs and Colrex and other existing international conventions. And lastly, I think there is also a lot of discussions on whether or how can the claimant or the parties in the South China Sea make cooperations, further cooperations in the South China Sea. I think that is possible for my next stance, but I think what should be taken into account first here is that any proposals for cooperation should be basis on the legal claim under the United Nations Convention on the Law of the Sea, to show that actually the proposal of joint cooperations is under the good faith and to put we are in the same context of compliance to the international regulations. So, I think that is my very brief comments on this conference and also how we are looking forward in the future. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Aristio. You’ve touched upon several challenges that need to be addressed, and I think it’s not easy to address those challenges, including the US-China rivalry or US-China competition. So, next, last but not least, I turn to Aria Stenek. She is a real young leader. She’s the director of the Young Leaders Program at the Pacific Forum, where she manages Pacific Forum’s Next Generation Engagement and supports its Women Peace and Security Program. Over to you, Aria.
All right. Thank you very much. My timer on. Thank you to the Diplomatic Academy of Vietnam for inviting me to participate in the 12th South China Sea Conference. The opinions in this presentation are mine alone and do not reflect the positions of my organization or its leadership. It’s an honor to be invited to this prestigious conference, and I look forward to receiving your feedback. Others have talked about the competing priorities of traditional and non-traditional security issues, but what I want to emphasize in my talk... I just realized that I don’t have it fully maximized. There it is. Is the intersectionality between traditional and non-traditional security issues and rally behind the calls in Sessions 7, 8, and elsewhere in this conference to apply science to promote functional cooperation for the long-term security and stability of the South China Sea. As Ambassador Ward just mentioned, there should be more discussion about marine protected areas, or MPAs, and how they can serve as more than just temperature management by effectively networking national policies into a coherent regional strategy. Marine protected areas as a policy instrument provide a suite of benefits tinging on environmental conservation, from food security to economic security and even disaster resilience. Because of the transboundary nature of marine resources, MPAs can be vehicles for international cooperation between stakeholders on the ground, like fisher folk, regional policymakers up high, and the science community at large. This, on the slide, is a count of MPAs in states surrounding the South China Sea. Two things to note. First is that scientific data is certainly susceptible to politics. What constitutes a well-managed MPA at the Marine Conservation Institute is different from criteria at the World Bank and Protected Planets. The percentage of EEZ covered by claimants’ MPAs is reported differently as well. The second thing to note here is that Malaysia, Indonesia, and the Philippines all have over 1% MPA coverage in their EEZs, and this is reflected consistently across the data aggregators. These three countries are members of the Coral Triangle Initiative. The Coral Triangle Initiative has been impactful for several reasons. As a multilateral organization, it convenes governments from all Coral Triangle countries and a range of public, private, and nonprofit organizations. It’s established in its guiding principles that conservation and preservation of the marine environment is central to sustainable development, poverty reduction, and equitable benefit sharing. Most importantly, it’s implemented a regional plan of action, from which each partner country has created a national plan of action to meet regional goals, including a region-wide MPA system that allows states to monitor and report by the same standards and share information fluidly. In the South China Sea, the coordinating body on the Seas of East Asia, or Cobb Sea, and partnerships in environmental management in the Seas of East Asia, known as PEMS Sea, serve similar functions as the Coral Triangle Initiative. However, these organizations are underappreciated and could benefit from increased coordination. Cobb Sea is an authoritative policy forum for the South China Sea, but has been criticized for not doing enough to include NGOs and scientists. PEMS Sea, on the other hand, excels at harnessing science to provide integrated coastal and oceans management solutions to local governments. But neither has gained participation from all South China Sea claimant states. In summary, all South China Sea stakeholders should be thinking about networking and operationalizing the ideas in Cobb Sea and PEMS Sea, and including external powers like the Quad Countries into these initiatives. Vietnam has made huge progress in the areas of fisheries cooperation with other regional states. Elsewhere, there’s been great strides in cooperation on curbing marine litter, pollution, and climate research. And as our media experts highlighted in Session 4, promoting examples of successful cooperation to the public is critical to building awareness and momentum of these gains. For these less-than-hard-powered initiatives to succeed in the long term, three key shifts in how states relate to the South China Sea must happen. First is to accept that challenges above and below the water are linked, as are their solutions. If we’re able to make progress in managing, monitoring, and enforcing protections on the marine environment, that can be translated into improvement in maritime domain awareness, which will in turn cement the norms and conduct of ocean users in both the high seas and territorial waters. Second, we need to embrace scientific fact throughout our societies, not just in the South China Sea communities, but globally. By using knowledge that is researched and agreed upon by an epistemic community, science can limit ambiguity and bring into sharp relief lethal security threats that don’t discriminate based on national boundaries. The final critical shift is to acknowledge that marine environmental protection is an ancillary to dispute resolution. It is how you effectively move toward cooperation and forge a shared maritime identity that reinforces coastal states’ responsibilities over coastal states’ rights, because protecting the natural environment is central to human security and not just a confidence-building measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Aria. Thank you for sharing with us your thoughtful comments and suggestions to enhance cooperation in the South China Sea. And this is our last speaker, and I would like to thank to our super panelists, who have opportunities to speak today, and other young leaders who are joining us online for your very fresh perspectives, your thoughtful ideas and comments and suggestions. And I’m sure that our conference will benefit from your contributions one way or the other. With that, may I propose an applause for our young leaders, and I would like to end the session here. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Tu, and all panelists. Your excellencies, distinguished guests and panelists, ladies and gentlemen. We have gone through all the nine sessions of the South China Sea Conference this year. The two-day program has come to the end now. So, now, we are deeply honored to invite Dr. Phạm Lan Zung, Acting President of the Diplomatic Academy of Vietnam, to come to the stage and deliver the concluding remarks. Please join me to welcome Dr. Phạm Lan Zung.
Dear all who are standing here with us in this conference room or online, I’m not going to make a long conclusion at this moment. I believe that everyone who attended this conference through these two days will have their own conclusions. However, I believe that you will agree with me that we’ve just had two days of very productive, in-depth, and useful discussions. And I believe that you all have got the message of this conference, which is through candid, open, transparent dialogues, we can maintain peace and cooperation, although the world is going through a lot of turbulence. And I also believe that each of you will gain new initiatives and ideas to make the South China Sea a sea of connectivity and cooperation, not competition and confrontation. A lot of people have... A lot of people helped us to make this event possible, and I am deeply thankful to all the ambassadors, moderators, who have done a brilliant job to manage all of the session, which is a combination of online and onsite. And they were able to run the session within a very strictly limited time, at the same time, able to simulate a lot of insightful discussions. And I am also sincerely thanks to all of the speakers who have made insightful papers and made very impressive and thought-provoking presentations. And I especially thank to those speakers from different time zones who have to be... To stay up very late at night or wake up early in the morning to participate in this conference. I also thankful to the members of media who are... I mean that who participated in the conference and reported about the conference. I am also very impressed with the young leaders who participated in this conference for the first time, but nevertheless surprised us with their very innovative approach, very insightful perspective, and very positive views of very challenging issues of the South China Sea. And we think that we will keep this young leaders’ session for next year. I also wish to thank all of participants online and here in this room. Without your presence, our conference would not be possible. And I’m deeply thankful to all of our partners. With your strong and active support, this conference would not be such a success. I wish to thank the CASS Foundation, the Asia New Zealand Foundation, Petro Vietnam, the British Embassy, the Embassy of Australia, Embassy of Canada, the EU delegation in Hanoi, the Embassy of Germany, the Embassy of France. Finally, I wish to thank all of my colleagues at the Diplomatic Academy of Vietnam, especially at the East Sea Institute. You’ve been dedicatedly... You have been dedicatedly planning, preparing, and organizing this conference. Thank to all who are responsible for taking care of the sessions, registration, documentation, interpretation, and to all many others who have been working behind the scene. And lastly, I would like to thank to Dr. Đỗ Nguyễn Hùng Sơn, the Chief Architecture of this conference. Congratulations, Sun, and his team for the success of the conference. You have done a great job. To conclude, I wish all you well, and we look forward to seeing all of you this year, next time, hopefully onsite here in Hanoi. Thank you.